You boys ready and ladies? But the call to order the county commission. Dr. Weeks, would you mind leave some prayer?
Father, we're thankful for the day you give to us. We're thankful for the change in the weather that we've seen. We're thankful for the rain that you've given to us to nourish and restore the earth and replenish it. Father, we're thankful for the warmth that we felt as we go outside. Father, we just thankful for all the gifts that you give us each and every day. We thank you for the commissions that are here gathered tonight to take care of the business of our county. We're thankful for the opportunity to serve. We ask a blessing on each one of the servants that work for the county, service county and services. Father, thank you for blessing us. Thank you for taking care of us. And we just ask that things that we do will be in accordance with your will and more value in all the things that we do. Just send your prayer to your night and amen.
Amen. Everyone stand for.
All the allegiance stood by the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Randy Simmons.
Yeah.
Ray Ledger.
There.
Dwight McIlwain.
Here.
Stacy Beatty.
Here.
James Dawson.
Here.
Becky Spicer.
Here.
Carl Buckner.
Here.
Jody Britt.
Here.
Mike Petty.
Here.
Danny Williams. Rusty Grove. Cindy Gray.
It's good to see you all tonight. First, I'll order business and approval of the minutes from June twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three work session. Open floor for motion. Motion by Commissioner Buckner. Second, by Commissioner McIlwain. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote with stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. I don't remember two is committee reports. Any committees to report? Oh, the third item that's not on here, it should be the third item. Oh, I did not let Ms. Moore know that we had an appointment, appointment to the nine-one-one board on the vacation. All that is Mr. Gary Petty of White Bluff. He has spent time in emergency services and he is familiar with radio. So he's going to be a good technical addition on that. So I'd like to have that moved forward to have his name on the agenda for the regular session. Open floor for motion. Motion by Commissioner Dawson. Second by Commissioner Gray. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote with stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Was somebody sneezing or somebody asking a question? It sounded like both. Nick, first item and next item of work is new business. Number one, four-way stop at intersection of Corley Drive and Lake Drive in Montgomeryville Point. Commissioner Williams. All right.
I thank you. What what this concerns is over the probably the last year and a half, we've done a couple of studies and this intersection is already a natural intersection. It has a roadway to the left as you're going in and a cul-de-sac to the right. It's right in the middle of a drag strip down through there. So it is an appropriate place. Superintendent, Mr. Hodge and I went out and had a neighborhood meeting at about fifteen, Jackie.
Yes.
Out there. And there was also another road up top of the hill that'd be appropriate place. I think three-way.
Yeah.
Three-way stop there. And most of them were in favor of that. We feel like I feel like that'll help break that stretch up a little bit. You know, even if they don't come to a complete stop, they're going to slow down. And it puts something on the enforceable side. So when we do have a chance to have a deputy do an extra patrol out there to kind of help because a lot of those houses around there that people got small children. And so that's been a concern of theirs. And I believe it'd be a good spot for one if y'all support that.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams, is that your motion? Motion by Commissioner Williams to have a second. Second by Commissioner Grove. Any questions or discussion for the sheriff, Mr. Hodges?
Yeah, I know. A lot of these stops out there, like, you know, that we was talking about, you know, they're going to slow up maybe that stuff. Why don't we put a speed bump on everyone? Hey, and seriously, they they they'd slow down or they would they would actually stop. I don't know how expensive it would be, but at least you'd be accumulating. I mean, doing something that would, you know, make them because their speed bumps are all get out. I mean, they.
There it is. And you're right. But the issue with the speed bump is when we're out trying to salt and plow the roads, we've got a speed bump there. We got to contend with and it's just it's too much of a risk at tearing our plows up.
Oh, so they're not.
If it wasn't if it wasn't for the the tearing the snow plows and stuff up, you know, it wouldn't be that bad. But when the snow gets on them, you know, it's going to be hard for the people. It's it's already enough going on at that point in time with the drivers. You know, we don't want to put anything else in front of them to have to contend with.
Well, it's like you're talking about the little kids and when I see one of them get killed or something like that, and you know, might be you benefit from it. Because like like Sheriff said, they ain't gonna stop and slow up. I mean, they'll slow down maybe, but.
But with a speed bump, it needs to be down to something below twenty mile an hour anyways. There's very few roads in the county that is a twenty mile an hour road. I think over what we're talking about right now, that is about the only ones that is twenty.
Yeah.
Anything above that, a speed bump, you stand the risk of damaging vehicles, causing an accident and.
Well, I'm telling you, they're not going to speed.
Well, they're not. But when they when you know, when when we put something out there and it start causing accidents and damage to vehicles, then we get those phone calls.
Yeah.
You kind of got to weigh it out and, you know, sometimes it just don't work right.
And I just wonder. Thank you.
Well, I mean, I'm kind of back cotton up on that at a stop sign. And I took the heat for it because I did print them in burns. We've not caused no damage and it did. It did stop the complaints. And it's a lot better at printing at a stop sign than it is in the middle of the street. And if you're in a residential subdivision, how many times you've plowed them roads in the last ten years in a residential subdivision? Not I'm not talking about a main road like Rock Church or Spencer Mill. How many times we put a snowplow in a residential subdivision?
Every time when we start around every year, we hit every road in the county. We start with the main roads first. Once we get the main roads, then we start branching out to the side road.
I'm like Cotton. I believe a stop sign and sheriff will tell you it's just a people are going to run it's going to run it. So it's not going to change much.
On the same note, when you put that speed bumper, they're also going to go around them. You know, if ain't nobody looking, they're going to do what they can do to avoid them.
And didn't burn it.
Right.
And I.
Burned.
I've hit them. I mean, I thought, Lord.
Burns burns don't have as as open stretches of roads and you know, the traffic is just a whole lot heavier on the rest of the county roads.
Yeah.
That's the only reason that we don't. We don't push for the stop the speed bumps. It's just there's too much going against it.
Act like Cotton's saying, you're you that argument don't stand, not in a commercial, not in a residential cul-de-sac. Or in a subdivision where they're going to a dead end anyway. Now, I can understand you saying that about Rock Church or Spencer Mill or Busy Road or something like that. That would that would stand good. But and I'm not talking down to you. I'm really not. I understand what you're saying. But in a cul-de-sac, that argument don't stand because you're 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 limited flow in a very limited situation, very limited people drive that street. Is that what you're saying, Cotton?
Yes. And you're absolutely right. But we have very few small subdivisions is what you what what would, you know, be just for this. Very few.
Those things are expensive.
They can be. You got you got the speed bumps, the speed humps, and some of those can get up to several thousand dollars depending on what you put, what the speed limit of the road is, what size you put in, whether you're putting permanent, whether you're putting temporary, you know, there's there's lots of other factors that that go along with them. You can get into spending several thousands of dollars.
Thank you. And I think from discussion on this, and I don't want to open up another can of worms, but the issue in this neighborhood, this is not a through road. So if somebody living in the neighborhood that's doing this, and we've all lived in a neighborhood or most of us have from time to time, where it's that one teenager or that one guy that's all jacked up on Mountain Dew or whatever it is, and they all rush to go home from work or get there, and we've all had one, they grow up, come and go, they move off. But until the neighborhood goes and visits their neighbors and tell them, because we're not going to run a lot of radar out there and you're not going to have sheriff deputy right out there writing a lot of tickets for running stop signs. So again, I appreciate what you wanted to do and I appreciate what y'all said, but sometimes it's still back up to the citizens to discipline themselves. So that's my editorial comment.
But be good, they'd be okay. But like like in my district, Fowler Road Fence. See, it's, you know, just two people can barely meet and everything and they fly up and down through there. And there's one, there's one old man that's that really has a hard time with it. And he's called the sheriff's department and sheriffs come out there and they we done road study and all that and everything, but a couple of speed bumps down there to solve that problem.
Thank you. Back on the question now, what was the question? Oh, it was a stop sign. So on that, any other question, discussion on the question before us? This is a move forward to the regular session agenda on August twenty-first. All in favor of vote with stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number two on new business, historical jailer's house preservation. The old jailhouse that y'all could see right over the top over there, I think it was built in eighteen thirteen. Dixon County government owned that building up until nineteen eighty-one and they sold it for one dollar to the Dixon County Historical Society. In two thousand seven, the Dixon County Historical Society sold it back to sold to City of Charlotte for one dollar. When I was elected mayor, I always thought that building's important from a historical standpoint. And I'd met with the mayor at that time. And he thought it was worth keeping for the city. But unfortunately, the last thirteen years, no work's been done on it of any consequence. They probably spent maybe a total of five or six thousand dollars. I met with the Charlotte City Council the night and asked them if they would consider selling that back to Dixon County for one dollar. But with understanding that I told them I had to get approval of the county commission to do it. I can't sign a contract or spend money or take on an asset without y'all's approval. But our goal is in our office is to get that building back. First of all, drive in and then start working on historical preservation grants to get it back to its glory from two hundred years ago. As you know, we're working on grants to get work done over at the historic courthouse, kind of with the idea that in the year two thousand thirty, when the historic courthouse is two hundred years old, that we'll have that work done here on the square and have these buildings back in. So my ask to y'all tonight is for us to buy that building back from the city of Charlotte for one dollar. I'll be glad to answer any questions y'all may have on it. Frankly, it was one of my best negotiating because they wanted fifty thousand and we got it down to one. So if you want to look at it, I saved us forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, but it's going to cost some money to get it drive back in, get the roof and windows back right on it. Motion by Commissioner Grove, who is my second. Commissioner Ledger. Any other questions or discussion? Well, in the perfect world, I'd like to spend whatever it took to get it back right. But I think the most important thing we can look at is getting the roof and windows satisfied to get that done. I don't think we're in a lot of money in that. I've had some estimates. We're talking about probably fifty thousand dollars for just that portion. Now, if we go back inside and want to get back to some historic nature, we could probably spend three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I'm not recommending that, but I am recommending we get a hold of it, stop the deterioration of the building. Yes. Thanks for any other questions? Yeah, there's historic grant money available and we're planning on applying for that. Again, it's not a hundred percent money. It would require a match from the county coffers, but we can maybe get work done at fifty fifty or in some grants, maybe even better.
I don't think it's coming from us, but I know that we've had some other communities like Cumberland Furnace with a museum that they have over there. They've asked if the county can help them along with some moderate repairs like that. And I'm just wondering if we start doing that, are we going to start hearing from other people with ideas that they'd like to see fixed?
Well, I can assure you daily, I get a whole bunch of ideas that that we don't have the money for. But the difference on this building is we will be taking ownership of this. I heard from our good friends at Cumberland Furnace and had discussion with them. And every time I go in the Clement Museum, I hear from Bob Clement and him wanting money too. So there's a lot of these different associations and I personally try to support them. And again, with my friends at Cumberland Furnace, I my suggestion to them before they start asking for money from another entity, they may want to have a fundraiser first to show that they're willing to put something in the game because I know how generous out of you are and y'all will all be willing to write a check if they're doing some of the work. And I'm talking about a personal check versus county money. But, you know, I think early on, we one of the first issues we dealt with after I was elected was the storm that blew away a good portion of the community center in Tennessee City. And I know in that was a long time ago, but I know you and I discussed that and we kind of had to go with the theory on these community centers. They were handed over from mostly from school to give these communities for let them operate. So we're very supportive of them by having the sheriff's department with Sheriff Eads, having his work crew do a lot of mowing and cleaning and things of those types. But I think once you open that can of worms, it's not a not a building that we own. I think you're right. I think it that's then the ask is endless. Thank you.
They won't go do the old jail.
Which old jail? The old, old jail. Sheriff Eads and I've had discussion. I think we were probably going to try to put a plan to have it removed because it seems to be it'd be cheaper to tear that jail down than have the the roof is going to cost as much repair as actually building a new building. So we haven't unless the sheriff has reached out, we haven't got any numbers on that. But we're going to come back to you once we have an opportunity and obviously be y'all's decision on that. But eventually he'll need expansion space. We're thirteen years into this jail now and it's held up very well. But it may be another five or ten years as county grows, crime seems to grow with it and we'll be in a position that we may need to do some expansion up there. And I think getting that old jail out of the way is probably the smartest thing to do. Any other questions, comments? We have a proper motion on the historic jailers preservation on that. If there's no other questions, seeing none, all in favor of vote with stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Is there any other new business to be brought up from commission? Commissioner Gray?
Yes, I am. I just wanted to bring this before the commission. I after the beginning of the year when we changed our A one zoning minimum property size from one acre to one and a half acre, there were still a lot of people that were, you know, unhappy with the the small change. And so I had a meeting with David Darnell, who's not here tonight, to ask him about if we could do a voluntary A two zone, which would increase the minimum lot size. And it would be something that would be available to those owners that have an A one zone already. So this would not be a comprehensive land change. It would just be similar to A one, but larger minimum lot size. And if the if this body wanted to, we could also, you know, maybe get rid of some of the special exemptions that are allowed in A one, like airports and small shopping centers. But Mr. Darnell said he he said this would be doable. This would be something the county could do. But I just wanted to bring it before the commission or and see if this was something that y'all were interested in, if we could put forth a vote to have them move forward with drafting something and get started on it for the county.
I would. And again, this commission, I will operate the will of commission. We appoint the planning and zoning to operate independently of us to basically take the political though out. And I know what you're asking. It's not being political, but if we send a vote down telling them what to do, we may be stepping over a line because they may take it that we're telling them what to do as opposed to suggesting something. So again, I'll ask Mr. Reagan on that, but we I don't have any disagree with what you're trying to accomplish, but we may need to take a real view of how we do it. Can you you want to add anything to that?
Yeah. So I think, I mean, the way that I think it's been handled in the past is if you had a desire to have the planning commission take a look at making a change like that, then you could send it in the form of a suggestion, ask them to study that and let them come back with whatever proposal they think would be appropriate. At the end of the day, though, I mean, this body can create zoning districts, even if it was over the objection of the planning commission. But I think typically that's how the process has started is to give them the opportunity to study it, hear from folks. hear from folks that may be impacted by it and then formulate something that they can bring back to this body as a recommendation.
Okay, well, I, I was just doing this as Mr. Darnell asked me to bring it forward and, and make sure this was something that the body, the legislative body was interested in before they went ahead and started drafting anything. So I'm kind of like rocking a hard place. I'm not really sure.
I, I understand and I, I'll talk to Mr. Darnell on that. But, and again, if it comes in the form of suggestion versus direction, I don't think that would be an issue, Mr. Reagan. Again, I, I think you, you, you seem to be saying, I, I don't have an issue with what you're trying to get done. Uh, we just, the idea of having a planning and zoning is to keep politicians out of those decisions after it's been held at arm's length. And so again, I, I've gone and I've gone twice, talked to the plan commission, maybe three times, but it's always over an immediate issue. And I think, you know, recently mostly R-three issue and then the R-two issue. And when I've asked for them to consider moratorium on that. So again, I, I, I don't mean to get all explainy here, you know, Bob Splaining, but just again, I, I think if y'all wanna bring that forth, the body like put that on the agenda and make it in suggestion form as opposed to a.
Absolutely. I don't wanna toe this by all means.
Well, no, and I, I understand. I, I mean, I just wanna make sure we're not, they feel like we're dropping a heavy hand on, do our bidding for us, so. But that's a motion to have that added to the agenda with motion for the, for the August twenty-first agenda. That's proper motion to have a second. Second by Mr. Petty. Any questions, discussion, mostly from Ms. Gray at this point?
Before we vote on it in two weeks, can we get some kind of description so we know what we're voting on, I guess?
Have y'all done a description of what, where A-two is kind of at least an outline?
We discussed it. I don't think I have anything in writing yet, but um, I can, I don't see why we couldn't get that. It's gonna be pretty close to an A-one anyway, just whatever, you know, size minimum prop, what, that they come up with or what we need to vote on. And if any of the special exemptions, you know, wanna be done away with, that's.
Yes, Commissioner.
I believe in something in this manner that, that two weeks is probably not significant, sufficient. So my suggestion to Ms. Gray would be maybe we put it off to next month's work session, then put it on the agenda there so we can educate herself a little bit more on it, know what's going on and give her more time to to, to fill us in on what's going on.
Commissioner Gray.
Sure, I'm fine with that.
Okay, why, why don't you and I talk and you and I, Mr. Darden, and then we'll get that down, Darnell, how long Mr. Darden is. Uh, yeah, I do. Uh, we'll talk and, and kinda get it defined and then here have y'all an outline. Try to get it to you before the work session. Uh, where y'all can take a look at it before the September work session. Is that, everybody okay with that? Yes.
Maybe I misunderstood or just wasn't paying attention.
It's okay.
I, I thought we were gonna send it to the planning commission, let them look at it and then send it to us. I thought maybe that was the proper steps we should take.
I think, but I think what Mr. Williams, I don't wanna, why don't you just say what you said, what you made?
I, I guess if I'm gonna vote on something to tell the planning commission to look at, I wanna know what we're telling them to look at. Uh, if we could have something in writing, you know?
Well, yes, I, I, I guess I don't, I don't feel good about voting on something. Like I said, I, I, I think we oughta send it to the planning commission, let them look at it. Cause like I said, I, I do feel like we're stepping on toes and I feel like that's what they're there for and that it needs to go to them and then back to us. I, yes, I, I get it. Like I said, with, that we can, we can do this, but if I'm them, I'd sit back and say, well, no need for us, you know? Uh, but I, I feel like we oughta send this on to the planning commission, let them look at this and then, and like, then like Mr. Grove says, then maybe it could, could we send it to the planning commission there next meeting, then, then it come to us in the next month or two or?
It's gonna be the will y'all and I, I, we're kinda getting out of our skis here now. Commissioner Gray, you've made a motion, I think, uh, on this. Did I get a second? I did. Who gave the second? Oh, yes, it was. Oh, that's you right there, Mr. Petty. I, that's, so you know. So we do have a proper motion second on this issue. So the issue, again, would you like to restate your motion so I don't misstate it or what y'all would like to do? That we, and again, was it a suggestion that, that the planning and so, that I think what Commissioner Williams is asking for, for us to come up with a general outline of what your attempt is? Is that what you want your motion to be? Or what do you want it to be?
Yeah, I think, I think uh, so again, I think what you're trying to accomplish here is asking the planning commission to consider a new zoning district of A-two with maybe some bullet points, some three or four things that you're thinking you would like for them to consider as a part of creating a new zoning district. And right now, maybe those bullet points are not firmed up yet and you're wanting to do that, which I think led to Commissioner Grove's request to maybe defer it a month to come up with those three or four bullet points. But with that, then again, I think all you would be doing is making a motion to have the planning commission consider that and come back with any recommendations they may have with creating a zone that might contain things like those bullet points. And then when it comes back, cause that's one of the beauties of a planning commission is if you get into the middle of trying to hash all that out, it just bogs this body down and it really takes away from what the planning commission is designed to do. And Commissioner Petty heads one up at the city, so he knows full well what that's like. But um, so I think if you wanted to defer it a month in order to come up with those bullet points, that'd be great. It'd just be a matter of withdrawing your motion and second to that and.
Sure, that sounds perfect.
Okay.
Okay, are you, and Commissioner Petty, you had the second. Are you okay with withdrawing that? Okay, good. So now we're not on a vote other than just defining that information and you and I, Mr. Darnell, can talk about that. Uh, at your earliest convenience. I'm good at ten-thirty tomorrow morning, so I've got something to do at nine. Um, but we'll do that. Is that okay? Is everybody fine with what we did online? Okay.
More question?
Not if it's gonna confuse me.
Yes, it is. Where, where are we at on the comprehensive plan that the firm that we hired? Do we know when we're gonna get that study back?
That, it has been completed. Uh, there's a meeting with all the stakeholders, uh, which are Burns, White Bluff, City of Dixon, Dixon County. After they do their final massaging to it, which, were you at the last meeting, Commissioner Grove? Okay, well, there was one, probably a week, maybe two weeks ago, a- and I think they were actually down to talking about maps. Once that's done, we have one more public hearing as we did before. Let the community look at it and then bring it back to each individual body to be voted on. Uh, my request was with, from Volker and everyone else that they be done by July thirty-first, which the writing and stuff is done. So it's just to get in a format to have the public hearing and then bring it to all four, all three cities and Dixon County. So again, uh, if you're talking about timeframe, probably for us to vote on it, October would be the date. Cause it's kinda hard to believe it's August right now, but by the time a public hearing's held in late August or early September, it'll be on our October agenda, I imagine. Is there additions or anything you'd like to?
No, I guess the only reason I'm saying that is because when we, when we had the ad hoc committee meet, board set up and we studied a lot of, a lot of the issues and, and we discussed A-two zonings. And when we got this comprehensive plan, it, we may find out that there may be some areas that could be identified as A-two. And there's also of the um, the areas that are already, that are considered ruled areas now in the growth plan, you know? So there was a lot of, I guess there was a lot of discussion in that committee. I think the reason we put that off was to get, to get the final plan.
Right.
And so that's why I'm saying that it might be something that could be corporate incorporated when we get the plan, I guess.
Well, we're at a point and from internal use, it's still, it's not a final document yet, so it's not a public document. But internally, Mr. Darnell's where, Ms. Gray, if anybody needs it for working purposes while we're turning final document, you know, if it's not the nuclear codes, you know, we're, it's the, it's trying to draw a blueprint to get us all going the right, in a similar direction. So if we need to use that plan as drawn now to help for guidelines of putting A-two together, it's available. Thank you. Right. Are we done with this one? We got both. I need a little gator hit right now or something. So, okay, we're all good on that. Okay, good. Is there any other uh, new business like to be brought before the commission?
Mayor, and I, I don't really under, I, I know with the new, we don't have a grievance policy. And I understand that something has to be put onto agenda. I guess constituents to my neighbors and my friends out here in the community tonight that's in my district that has concerns about their property with the new convenience site. Um, me and Chris and Jessica's been in conversation. I think at this time, they would just like to be heard and, and state their case to the county commission. I don't know if that's something that we can do on the agenda for the next um, regular meeting. And I know with the new law, that if it's on the agenda, we gotta give them so much time to speak so they can plead their case to the county court. Um, my, mayor, some direction on this?
Yeah, uh, it's, it's up to the commission about what's on the agenda because again, you may notice on your agenda this time, it's no longer an agenda because the concept of a work session is to, we meet two weeks ahead of time to make an agenda. And so now because the new ruling about public comments, how it's done, you know, you will notice here, this is items to be considered. And you know, you can add items or take items off this agenda, but then this is to set the agenda for the regular session, which is a true agenda, which of course by rule, as y'all voted on and the state law requires, we have time for public comments at that time. So to put it on the agenda, if uh, you wanna make your case to the commission, uh, what needs to be put on the agenda, uh, do that. And if we put it on the agenda, then uh, we'll have public comment time on August twenty-first.
Okay, so my motion would be, and, and like I said, this property was purchased for previous court before we was elected. Um, I, I believe that we, we did impact the Christians' property to where the new convenience site's gonna be. So I, I do believe that it is to, that this court needs to at least give them the courtesy to come back in a couple of weeks and, and state uh, what their concerns are, uh, the, the property, how they feel like it's been devalued. So I, I would, I would make a motion to put them on the agenda to at least let the, the court hear their concerns.
Thank you. That's a motion by Commissioner Grove. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Spicer. Any question, discussion on the project? I've had some questions offline. Here's your opportunity to ask them now if you'd like. Okay, here are no questions. Uh, all in favor, uh, vote with stating aye, opposed, thank you. That'll be added to the, to the, any other new business to be brought before? Okay, any announcements? Nothing. Y'all got boring all of a sudden. Uh, before, we noticed after we meet again, we'll be celebrating Ms. Gray's sixty-fourth birthday. Oh. I'm sorry, I thought I s- yeah, I, I thought it was the year I was born. I'm sorry, it's, it's close. But we'll, we'll celebrate it appropriately at, at August twenty-first meeting. Any other announcements? Before I read the final announcement, I will remind you that the September work session will be on the Tuesday, following Labor Day is next time we have that. So uh, that final announcement is the next work session meeting will be on Tuesday, September fifth, two thousand twenty-three at seven PM. The Beaufortale Booty Reed Junior, County Commission Chamber of the Dixie County Administration Building, Four Court Square, Charlotte, Tennessee. Have a motion, second adjourned?